Thank you. I call a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District. Today, Monday, December 6th, 2021. Today's meeting is being held in the District Administration Building and live streaming through YouTube. Next on the agenda is the pledge allegiance and moment of meditation. Pledge allegiance.
This is the I, United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation's ground, indivisible, and every and every person.
Next on the agenda is Board of Education acknowledges the Treasury Report for September 2021 and October 2021. It would go to the floor. We did get a couple of emails that forwarded to our administrative staff and to our board members, one revolving around quarantine rules. And I think people have been out there reporting about negative testing basically to return to school and things like that, but I think that's on a overall Department of Health level. Then the other one was just A I S stopping. I think Dr. Cook also would. Does that need a report or anything?
So as far as local orders for return quarantine and/or tests this day through the memo drafted by the New York State Department of Health, on December 3rd, that gave authority to local health departments to make that decision whether or not counties would test in. I know some counties in our regions have, as far as I am aware, Orange County has not. I actually emailed Dr. Gelman again this afternoon. I have not heard back, but to my knowledge, Orange County has not made a decision on either of those items. And then in relation to the A I S question, I have not had any feedback from our K2 principal where that email directly was asked about that we are understaffed in terms of support for A I S. However, I will follow up and go over the sectioning with Mr. Friedman so I can appropriately respond to personnel.
Thank you. It goes into the President's Report. Before, I wanted to focus on the Land proposal. Everybody had their information or questions. I know we had some questions regarding roofing. I know roofing was an issue and started that whole email correspondence with Matt in leading up the today's meeting to try to streamline it a little bit. Because in that latest thing, they had a big difference between restoration and replacement of the roofing. So trying to get further clarification on that. The next step to get clarification on that, they have to do some scanning to get further information. Problem is, is the infrared scanning is too late in the calendar year because it's temperature sensitive. And we could do some nuclear testing on it. It's not temperature sensitive, but more expensive. Probably to do all the buildings on a nuclear testing would be about 25, 30,000. I don't think you need to do all the building testing personally, but once we get further questioning here, I think we'll kind of figure that out. My first, first thing I think we should decide is try to figure out our budget on this. If I'm correct, if I'm wrong in any of these numbers, but ballpark numbers is about four million from the federal grants and about five million in capital reserve. It's probably about nine million dollars. Obviously, to do any of the projects that were listed, whether we achieve this or if we're expensive for the whole district, we are far short of that number. Does anyone feel like you should go above that nine million dollar budget and go to get a capital on project? I don't think so, right?
The four million, we would use that to upgrade the air conditioning system there.
I think the four million, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the four million has to be earmarked for HVAC.
Right. I really want to see what we. I mean, then would we get the air conditioning?
No, I think you didn't lead it to making decisions. I'm taking the next step off of nine million if we all agree nine million is the budget. We know four million has to go to HVAC. I think the question now becomes, if you look at the proposals, are we going to do one million at a time or do we even want to try to spread this out? I think if you bring that back in Gerard, I think you'd prefer to do one billion. I think the volatility cost, spending time with second, because it just worked last done off, preferably off season to be shorter than summer or something like that. For example, if you look at Scottstown. I think the question I think I couldn't find is the listing of how many handles, how many units were used going?
I don't know if there was an exact count.
So maybe we can get that mentioned before the notices. Last question I had for them before we left last time was how much more is put to coil in given the empty air conditioning currently? I think it was 1500 on, if I remember correctly. Can you help me? 1500 per unit. So if you looked at, I'm not saying we do this, but if you looked at Scottstown Avenue, an option one or an option two. Let's just say option one, which is replacement, that's 5.3 million, and the roof is 1.8 for replacement. That could, could have an option be done. You wanted to put air conditioning in there, that was the vote for the board, 7.6 plus 1.8, they're pretty close. And we may have funds to contribute, who knows, to get that done if you wanted to do one building at a time. G I S, I think is one, around 10 million. 10 million rotten one, 12 million falling happening rotten two. But the roofing, to do a new roof there is 2.1. Roofing on C J Hook there was not minimal, 300,000. 7.2 for air direct replacement. So the question is, we want to do one building at a time? Do we want to, is anybody in favor of going to air conditioning?
Put the coils in?
Yeah, not putting in there, but option two. Uh, where's the building? Did you did Scottstown? 7.6 versus 5.3.
All right, all right. Let's say we took the four million, that's basically earmarked for Anaheim or operating, correct?
Correct.
And we put that whole four to Scottstown, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, now we have to deal with really not touching any of the other buildings and what the public might have to say. Because we're not touching the other buildings, correct?
I think, I think you probably can eliminate the high school. And my, what we could do, discussion, for multiple reasons. One, we just did some work up there most recently, had most extensive work recently. Two, I think that affects state aid, one, but again, that I think.
So when you, state aid works on a sliding scale. When you complete work on a campus within any given timeframe, you max out the amount of state aid you can get on a project within that timeframe. We are maxed out on the high school campus right now. You cannot double dip, so we could not apply any of the federal money, even if we were eligible, and then apply for state aid on top of it. However, let's assume that the board said, yes, we want to go forward, we want to borrow, we want to do X scope of work. All of that would be at dollar for dollar cost. We would not receive any aid because of the amount of work that was just recently completed at the high school. The other buildings would be eligible for aid, so if you did go forward to borrow or if you just used capital reserve, anything that you did put in would most likely draw aid on.
So I think kind of you work it way back down, right? So you, so now you want that three buildings, potentially you get the most bang for your buck, basically. Recommendation from Land was to start on the other buildings. And we're way up. Doesn't mean you got to take other energy, but I think we've got to wait to see what are the, what's the roof because without a roof, you don't have the.
Right. So I have not read the full memo, but leaked today, something came out too about a time extension for expenditure of the federal funds as well. I don't know exactly what it says and what the conditions are, but that may help in being able to allow for some more time in the past before you even have to make a final decision. Just the only, we've said this over and over, just remember, if the board chooses to go forward with any H VAC award, there's going to be X number of districts contemplating the same thing. A war with Pats there this past week, which do include H VAC upgrades, everyone is going to be in the same group.
Is there any information that Mr. Reeves wants to share, what his opinion was on? How things should go?
I think he will work specifically under the conditions that the board recommends. As far, he and I have had many, many conversations about this. In terms of indoor air quality, if the board is going to contemplate changes to indoor air quality, he strongly recommends considering cooling. More and more that you look at upgrades that are happening to buildings just to preserve the overall integrity, not just of comfort inside the building, but the facility itself that benefits from humidity control or benefits from temperature control, his recommendation would be for the board to consider doing so.
What to do with the building?
Building by building. Correct.
Really?
I'd agree with Tom.
Building by building.
Yeah.
Yeah, we started the discussion, but if we don't find that, then maybe it's open up, sounds like it's looking.
Yeah, the, the quote on the G I S is 2.1 million.
Is that the?
That's replacement.
Replacement.
Odds are, I mean, some of, a lot of the information they went off roofing came off in 2015 D C S, weren't 2000, by the time this is done, you know? Right? So restoration probably at that point is really a waste of money. You know what I'm saying? Over time, it gives us another year, doesn't it mean?
So replacement numbers on what would you?
I think replacement numbers based on some emails that went back and forth and then realizing that what they were working on was in 2015, probably doesn't make sense for us to even consider the restoration at this point.
You're going to find that, probably that number is going to be low because that was back in 2015. The high school, we actually had to expand.
Correct.
Some of the damage we put there from, you know, when we started.
The high school still has terrific issues for management as well.
So my, my thought was, based on thinking about the 2015 D C S that they're working off, and I don't even think it makes sense at this point, they're trying to get a difference between restoration and replacement.
Oh, so what we should be doing, where? Yes, we just got the R F P response from Land and Rec and Jim Ferris and I made it to go through the, so.
So I wouldn't even wait to dirty, right, on the, on the scan. Or if we can do one building and this thing just do building, replace it, right? One building is going to take almost all the money.
Yeah, not, I would, I would.
I think neither, if you're going to go one building, you can move down, maybe we're like go the.
I'd take the S. You do, so we can take Scottstown, we can do that whole. I think you have to do addition on that, so that probably doesn't get beat on.
Now they have 1.8 million for replacement.
One wing in Scottstown, and I didn't bring that data down, but one wing in Scottstown has been replaced, so it's not the whole building.
So I would consider the whole, you know?
I don't think it was.
No, no, that, that quote did not address that.
And how, what was option two, was that the roof?
Option two, S A S is 7.6, roofing is 1.8, which is 9.4. One option. You want to do one billion at a time?
Folks don't do roofs, right? That inquiry, or you think that you can only do roof and each of you see just one building and leave the other? You can't leave your roofs, right?
You'd talk in years to, you know, get up to, to G I S to get that in.
Right, I think that would be, I guess it depends on what the building conditions for classes and quality generally.
We're not going to have that back. Let's just be clear, the D C S will take on the, we're going to be late spring, early summer before we have the final D C S, because they go through every building brand.
I don't think any of the, the roof. You want to comment on the roofing, right?
Well, I think the, the one piece to keep in mind is what was already noted. If this was an issue that was identified in the 2015 D C S, the only roofing work that has been done was minimal repair work, and it was just repair work at the high school, it was not a replacement. So the roofs are continuing to age. I'm assuming that given that they committed to the scan, I mean, you can do just a walk through the facility, especially on a rainy day and especially if we go through the winter time with ice and snow jams, you're going to see where the leaks are. Every building has leaks. There's not one that doesn't have it. That being said, how much time can we get out of them? Could you phase it? Could you finish one building? Likelihood is, is we'll, we'll be able to hopefully capitalize and save some money in capital reserve in subsequent year and go back again the next year and go back again the next year. We could do that. That five million that you currently have in capital reserves is still currently not going to address all of the issues, so we have to look forward to something. We have to pick probably what's worse right now. Have made somewhat of a commitment to upgrade some of the H VAC within the buildings as well, so some combination is probably the perfect direction, but how much roof do you do and how much H VAC do you do? That's the balance that you have to hit. But as far as roofing goes, I think it's going to bear repeating, we're going to be close to seven years down the road since the last report. They haven't done.
And with leaks, it's not only the roof, you can water the building, you can damage the earth and water.
So we're with Scottstown, the final, 1.8 for roof. If you go for option one, it's just replacement, 5.3. If you go for cooling, 7.6. 9.4, if you do option two and roofing for S A S. If you go 5.3, you can then do, you can probably do two or three roofs. And put the, you put a coil in.
Or option three.
Option one, which is replacement, and then you can do S A S, you probably do.
That's probably.
With that cooling, if you put a coil in for each cooling.
That's not cheap, dude, that's 15 hundred per unit.
It's not that big, it's not, I mean, it's probably, yeah.
Three, five, six rooms, so.
You could say 40, 60 grand. At 40, it's 60 grand, 50, it's 70, you know, it's not like millions.
True.
You want to get, what, what do you have for total roofs for like district? Uh, it's about eight and a half million.
Which we're not going to have anyway, because we're working a lot of.
Yeah, you're not going to get all the roofs, and you don't really want to go to high school anyway. If you did, if you did the three roofs, C J Hook is 120,000, because we did a lot of moving here, right? So if you did S A S, G I S, and C J Hook, or roofing, that's 4.2. If you did one S A S, it's 5.3, that's 9.5.
All right, so if you.
It's close. That, that gets three buildings done on roofing and one, close to one whole building on, upgraded to HVAC. Not cooling, but new hampers, which hasn't been replacing, some of them in 50 years. And that goes against, you know, some of the, you know, recommended temperature control recommendations that are out there, but it's us better than that.
I'd also like to know, okay, we put the coils in for 1500, that's okay, 60 grand, whatever. Let's be realistic. How many years is it going to be before we actually put the AC in? Let's be realistic.
You know, you know.
You know, I, what I, what I know, what I know is, you put the coils in, you don't do anything for five, six years, it goes totally obsolete for the handling, you know what I mean? I just don't think, I just don't think A C is very realistic at all when it's heat detectors, I just don't see it. Five years, I don't.
Unless you, with a, with a profit.
Yeah. Good shit.
Which I don't see that passing.
No, anybody over the age of 35, we didn't have a clue, kids.
Listen, if you go back to our original, I went back, it was almost 10 months ago and we started this, almost a year ago, basically. And it was really to upgrade the, the units. We really weren't thinking air conditioning. I understand that air conditioning, climate control, the power issue with I E P, people doing things like that.
We put in about 70 of those units in and out every year throughout the.
And they're relieved. They're not.
They, they control humidity at 30.
So I think that's, you know, if we're looking at the reasoning for it, I think it's because of that trend. Other reason I wouldn't focus on the high school for that, I think we talked about it because, you know, while it's good to have, I can't do it, whatever, I think it's. So I would focus on that, the other building. But, so that's the question. You can do option one, direct replacement. Upgrade the handlers, that has been upgraded for 40, 50 years. And then to try to get, I'm planning to do three roofs, so be close, you have to come up with a little bit of money out of, out of operating, if I can work it, try to get 9.5. I guess I got 1.8 for the S A S roof, 2.1 for G I S and 300.
I really think those numbers would. About five years.
No, these numbers are, the estimate on the roofing is current.
That's current.
That's the news.
That's current.
Plus we could get aid on that, potentially.
You don't get a budget for roofs, but yes.
That's current.
And I think it's important to note too that with, and with option one, we are improving air quality.
Yes.
In the buildings, which is something that we do want to do. We're not cooling it, but we are improving air quality.
And one, and one bill.
Right, right. Also, two, if I was understanding it correctly, from what Lynn was saying, if you don't fix the roofs, you really can't put anything on these roofs to help with the cooling, so we really have to, we have to do something.
Well, you can, but then you're going back to undo a lot of work that you did.
Right.
So they did that and did one building, S A S, for example, that's 9.5 and three, three of your buildings moved up.
You're hearing this point, also, you know, those quotes may be recent. You know, once you start spreading roofs and pulling stuff off, the chances of not finding more work to be done aren't, you know?
And I understand that too, but also there's a lot of escalation in here.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not.
You know what I'm saying?
That's for his scans, you know, the scans will, 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 checks for dampening.
Sure, yeah.
You know, you, you can't look at it and see the.
Plus when you got, you know.
Or if you start ripping it up and.
As we will know in the last project, things change all the time, right? You know, this would be the baseline of what we're trying to do.
Matt Milton now did articulate that when he was here last night, that if the scope gets smaller, and we want to pull out the construction manager, there's certain things that we want to pull out, there, there's latitude in the budget that's written to reduce the proposal, if you will.
It's kind of tough, because what do you do? Do you put Band-Aids on everything, or do you go in and you fix one thing? And then you don't have to touch it for very long time. Right, is that what boils down to?
Well, I guess the question I have, or is anybody really wondering?
Well, I'm perfect, well, yeah, nice.
In this project, in this nine million dollar project, can we, can we afford to do it?
I don't think so.
Alright, so let's take that on the board, and so it's option one. Right, if you want to start in Scottstown with option one, then I think you can do three roofs.
Or closer, right?
And you can peel that, I mean, if you run a new crossover run, you're, you're reducing skill of work, if that happens.
That could be looking at, just for people's knowledge, look at all four buildings combined, based on the last D C S, with a hundred and ninety-three thousand, hundred and ninety-three thousand square feet of space, of roof space. That needs to turn, a really replacement. Now, that, now, the other thing is, every year your revised might get better. Right? And, and that four million is. Four million would go right to five point three, and over a month, we have to use that.
So if the board is going to choose to appropriate that money to H V A C work, it has to be specifically for air quality, and not go for facilities.
It's not going to like that.
What you're saying, and then you, you see the email that.
So there was, there was something that came out today, and I hope that I have not read it yet, it came out late today, that said, an extension for time for expenditure for those money, as good as they recognize.
What was it?
Now, what I said, our, our year was twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think we decided to just like, maybe or next week or two weeks from now, this product doesn't get started until twenty-three, twenty-four.
Late twenty-four.
Maybe twenty-four, maybe, we're going to try to do it over the summer, I think, so I might be twenty-four. And in that meantime, hopefully you can, I think every year.
It would probably do it somewhere in twenty-three.
And I don't know whether you can go, just going for it. That's what I'm saying, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-six, at least on our last project, I think it's twenty-four.
And it might be possible, but it might be a lot easier for that quality.
I.
I know, nobody does it, so.
Yeah, this, this is going to be a matter of the town to know, and any changes in administration, I don't know if we'll see any more money coming from the federal government. This was direct federal aid, and the states sent to the past room, huh? There's been no talk of anything else coming to the schools.
Then I think you do what you said, you, area and losing Scottstown, you do roofs, and in three years, two, three years, we're going to have to run through the park.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to manage the budget, that we can put, not put money in the capital reserve. I think, same time they go out to vote, we got both to use this money anyway. I think the same time we do that, we go out, put that in our, our next budget vote, or that are capital, authorization for that are capital reserve. I think, is your reading to do five million or is it?
You could operate it if you want.
I think you go up to ten million, so you can do, we kind of know what the cost is now, try to put as much money as we can in operating efficiencies over the next few years, to address these issues that we know we got to deal with in the next, you know, year or two. I think a five million capital reserve kind of limits us on how much we can plan out, and we know we, we got, we got issues.
You gotta keep finding out this new D C S will be coming out, it's going to be high for our, if you guys come out.
Exactly.
No doubt.
And hopefully there'll be ways to, perhaps in different things that we can address.
Can I have a couple of labor issues too?
Uh, G I S is up for replacement, and they just did, uh, the tubing there as well. They did the high school. And Clucker is okay for now, and I think Scottstown is going to have to stop.
They should be, they should have, they should have, I agree, just to.
I think, you know, as we know, in capital price, we've learned in our last capital project, you know, there's some frequency items that would come in, that comes in under. But maybe those are some of the things that we can talk about as far as the project to, you know, add into there as the, as project goal one. For the, for the other handlers in some of the buildings. We can kind of make that list, if you'd like to continue to do this as a project goal one. So here's my question, we want to, is that kind of where we want to go? Option one, five point three, direct replacement of A C, is that right? S A S. And then roofing, a little short.
I think you want to.
We can look at scope of work like that.
Look at scope of work for three, try to get three buildings done. I don't know, like. Are they even numbers back there, do you have it?
No.
Must be, no, right, so you can, can you bucket that?
No, you can't.
That's just kind of payback, I think.
Correct, you don't get it for the subsequent year, well, you don't get it to your final, your final files, your final cost report.
Now, state data comes back to us, can that be allocated to?
Well, go back and do your revenue. So, once you have your final cost report, and you know what your annual payments of state data are going to be, you can track it and do a rap down.
Okay.
I, I don't need a vote, I just, I have a general sense of direction, of direction the board wants to go, and I can start the work.
Okay.
What do you possibly want to do?
A vote vote? I think that one has to be, let me try to talk the line and see what.
Well, we have to talk with them, we have to get the specific scope of work ready, we have to get authorization from the board, and then that basically starts the process from there. Proceed, perfectly, we have to make sure our funding source is secure, and then start to pick a date for when we want to go to vote.
And it's my, you know, it's my appetite, and writing the word, and keep it that.
This press.
Training, we tie it, and probably seven, a little bit.
Good conversation for us to have as we get closer.
Any further comments? Thank you. Uh, last thing on the president's report, would be numbers that I always want to say as nice as you care. Thank you for showing up, you're being here tonight, you're speaking, representing, it's always nice to have you here. I don't like that air quality conversation. She's very, very fine, I, you know, I can tune.
It is really interesting to hear, though, especially guys, um, like, uh, the fact that you guys can't communicate on high school, you know, that's okay. I probably won't have it, but, um, but, you know, I'm still at the school quite often, even since I'm dead, so it's interesting to see how to go on the playoff, and, you know, I, I saw my family, who I live with, people with G I S too, so wherever we're off going, it is very interesting, you know. We're, we're cardless.
Something like that. Uh, last thing on my, um, report, maybe it is update, I know we talked about, um, this calendar events, and we've been kind of doing digital.
Yep.
Little calendar, my little update on that, our.
So in this week's, uh, weekly update in your email, you should have had a link to a new digital calendar that has been created just for Board of Education, for you to be able to see any public events that you would want to come into attendance for, I know our secretaries have already started populating it. Mr. Reddiker has also reached out to the building local clerical that will be populating that for you, giving them some tips and shortcuts, and having move information over into that calendar, so the board can say, well, on what's going on around the district, have an opportunity to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, next agenda is my newsletter update, Jane Johnson.
So we had a delegates meeting on December first, the presentation was on pandemic learning needs and high impact tutoring. The presenters were from the National Student Support Accelerator, they presented research suggesting that since the pandemic, there's been a ten percent decrease in literacy overall, and students are approximately four to five months behind, seeing the biggest impact on students who are low socioeconomic status. So they presented what high impact tutoring is, um, what it entails, it's pretty rigorous, it focuses on acceleration, not remediation services. So, all that information will be forwarded to Dr. Coats to review. Is that it?
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda is the super agenda report, I suppose.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to start with, uh, update to our goals and objectives, and they're all moving on the screen, that'd be great. So I'm not going to go through the entire presentation again, but rather, give you a little spot here, highlight the changes that we discussed during every session together on goals and objectives. Obviously, um, very quickly, we talked about creation of a strategic plan. The technology plan was something of particular concern, and a additional goal was requested during our last review. I have put up a goal with basically a two-prong recommendation. Number one, as you remember, we talked about earlier in the fall, issues of inventory control as we work towards a one-to-one initiative. I was talking to Mr. Reddiker before the meeting started, it seems to be working. Uh, the amount of loss that we seem to be incurring with damage seems to be slowing down. I think there is still some work to be done there, but also we want to make sure that we are looking at how we allocate our resources to make sure that as we move to a true dedicated one-to-one policy, that we have adequate inventory and backup to be able to meet those needs. If you remember, we talked about the possibility of issuing specifically to students in both the fifth and the ninth grade cohort, a new Chromebook when they start that grade level, and essentially, that Chromebook stays with them for a four-year period. Mr. Reddiker, Carter, and myself have talked about our regular purchases, and whether or not we would be able to meet that demand. I recommend that we continue to look at that as a goal to begin that this year. One of the other conversations that we had was around parent training for software that we use in the district. Prior to the pandemic, Mr. Reddiker had certainly done a great amount of training for parents in Google Classroom. We would also look for the opportunity to have sessions for parents, both in person and remotely, to continue to bring parents up to speed on things like Google Classroom and any other software programs that our teachers may be using in the classroom that are intended to be interactive between home with the parent assisting their child and the school building. Other significant changes that we have made, uh, in relation to our next goal, the district guidance plan, spoke about, again, including parents in the process of college planning process, and looking also at the possibility of expanding our career internship into vocational placements as well. Seems to be an opportunity to expand appropriately here, working directly with the high school, and working with key staff at the high school as well, to be able to make sure that this could be a successful goal, moving towards the end of the year, planning for the new year. Other goals that we discussed last time that did not have any changes, obviously the update to our Board of Education policy regarding facilities use and the fee schedule as well. And also, as we discussed this evening, working towards adoption of a proposal to upgrades the mechanicals for air quality improvements. Just a quick synopsis, and have it answer any questions on that, and, uh, make any last minute changes that we're comfortable approve and adopt our goals and objectives for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Any questions?
On our software programs, is there any way to do analytics, like Naviance? Is there a way to say, hey, a hundred parents signed into this, or is there any way you can track that?
So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to handle that question?
Go ahead, Mr. Reddick.
So there are, um, there's a couple of things happening, we can use ClassLink, which is our single sign-on platform, and many of our platforms are populated through there. Moving forward in the future, we're also, I'm, I'm looking at what it would cost to get what they call ClassLink Analytics Plus, which would track not only what is done, um, through ClassLink, but also other internet browsing on district managed devices, so we can track what other websites might be popular with our staff. Also helping with EdLove 2D and privacy policy in gathering that information, in case we're out of, maybe using stuff maybe we shouldn't, based on our privacy policies. So we have to investigate that, um, we can use some through GoGuardian as well, so we have a couple of, uh, subscription services that will help us, and then we can go through and contact vendors too, right? So I'm contacting vendors regularly, wondering, you know, hey, are we using this platform? Um, you know, and sending it to Mr. Carter, Mr. Coats, and, uh, trying to figure out, like, what's the cost analysis too on this? So, um, but certainly like something like Naviance, where it, it's probably used in chunks, right? In, in seasons of a student's life. Um, similarly, it's hard with our budget cycle where it's, you know, the early December, and some software might be more relevant in second semester, for, as we're making a budget plan, teachers might say, oh, I didn't use it yet. You know, so it is hard to look at the big picture, but we do certainly take a look at a couple of different prongs of analytics.
One of the things Mr. Reddiker and I have spoken about as well is legacy data as well, look over time, what has happened through the years, and now more than ever, we have to even go pre-pandemic to see, what is it, what does that data look like? And there were significant adjustments made to expenditures for this year, based on programs that have been sitting in order.
The only reason I ask is that, that information would help us attain this goal.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's it.
I think, uh, you're good to, or good to adopt that tonight.
Great.
And there you'll start entering into the super.
A lot of this, and this is revell, and Mr. Gore also make this public on the district website.
Great, thank you.
Some other items to report on this evening, uh, Jared, please do announce that we have eleven students represent the district at the Zone Nine Area Allstate Festival. Like to congratulate from our high school, Jacob Atista, Roxanne Aslan, Tanner Conklin, Ben Thurl, Paul Choi, Kefiel Foster, Rachel Seo, Serena Yedu, Lauren Carroll, Marcella Barnhorst, and Emily Dong for representing our district this year at Area Allstate. Great thing to see this program run again, and a high-quality music program that we continue to support here in the district. Mr. Carter and I were also very fortunate to be able to attend our National Honor Society induction very recently. It was great to see, uh, programming in person again. Wonderful, and one of the best parts of our National Honor Society induction that I enjoy the most is to hear our other students read nominations and reasons for support for their fellow classmates being inducted. One program that is near and dear to my heart as well, uh, is our Goshen Grade Breakfast. So many times we've called to recognize high academic achievement, or athleticism, or accomplishment in the arts. The Goshen Grade Breakfast is certainly designed to recognize that, but also, those students that go above and beyond in areas that may not otherwise be recognized. Good behavior, care to others, help to others, and it was wonderful this past week to celebrate ten of those students, and to hear some of the vernacular that the teachers would use about just being an all-around good person. And now more than ever, to hear our teachers speak of what's going well, i- is really moving us in a positive direction. So it was wonderful to be able to attend that this week, and to see our teachers and our administrators celebrating together, not only with our students, but with our parents, at a wonderful breakfast prepared by Mr. Boraski at the high school. That's it, I'll turn back to you.
Great, thank you. I have a question, Maureen, and, can you get my head, sorry, thank you. We were talking about the Carolers, that's gonna be next meeting.
Next meeting.
Do you want, please, I know we've gone back before, did everybody complain doing that, or? Were they showing a point of view, or?
We were talking, um, to Hannah Murphy about whether having people in, or we leave them outside. Uh, the group is about twenty-five, and of course. The group is about 25 and of course that age group, new parents at home. So she actually thought it would be better, I think we would be along the front pathway.
They'll take a break in the name.
This will be one of their stops. But I'll get a better time as to exactly why she's actually.
Yeah, they're during the meeting, let's take a break and go on.
She'll try to, she knows that it starts at 6:30, so her plan was shortly before the meeting.
Okay.
I'll try to get a good time that she makes.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then in January, we'll start to have our music group scan, small, small.
The younger crowd, they have parents, I figured, you know, she figured we'd go around size. Next on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Good evening, everyone. Just two quick updates for you. Dr. Coats and I had a great opportunity this morning to meet once again with Julia Richter and Stacy Razzell representing Choose Love. It was a great conversation. Today, our focus was on pre-programming strategic session that we're putting together. Right now, what we're looking at is putting together a survey that we can send out to what we term, if you recall, our Choose Love Champions in the building. We're actually looking to expand that by just a few, within a few other departments as well. The information that we gathered with this survey will help us to create a more ideal program for each individual building. Dr. Coats and I believe that there are, you know, unique instances in each building that need to be addressed. So, you know, if you think about Scottsdale Avenue in comparison to Ocean High School, great differences there that we need to address differently. So this, this survey will really help us to design those ideal programs building by building. When we get to the point of collecting the data and getting our programs together, we will then move on to the kickoff and the implementation workshops. And this will take a little bit of flexibility within our buildings, with our building-level administrators and all of our faculty and staff members, because of course, we cannot do the entire district all at the same time. And we are going to try very hard to get some in-person training in addition to some of the previously recorded training and also trains that are archived. We are hopeful that we can have Ms. Lewis come in and join us for a kickoff. Of course, that would be very powerful. However, I'm not certain that that can happen. And I will tell you that Mrs. Razzell is a wonderful advocate of the Goshen Central Schools as she is a community member. As you recall, she is the Choose Love Advocate through New York State. So I know she's in our corner really pushing for that. Once we get through the implementation workshops, it will help our educators to have a better understanding of the actual background of the program, breakdowns of lessons, break down the actual curriculum pieces. And they'll have a chance to see demo lessons in action as well, which I think is very unique and also very important. And then as we move further on through the trainings, our goal is to provide some self-care for the teaching staff and faculty and staff members, which will focus on mindfulness and mental fitness activities to help our, our teaching staff and faculty and staff members and administrators just deal with the day-to-day, some of the issues that we continue to see that are unfortunately taxing at times. So again, I think we had a great session. We did inform our administrative team today in cabinet. And we expect to be moving forward rather quickly. I think we can really start implementation here with the next step as we enter that second semester in January. Also wanted to mention to you that the digital equity survey was uploaded today to Level Zero. You know, Dr. Coats and I, we're, we're kind of happy with our, our results and our turnout. We chose to use EdBusiness this year to present the digital equity survey to our families. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible, whereas you would receive an email, if you're not familiar, click your link and it takes you right to your child's information. Simply click a couple of buttons with yeses and nos, and it reports back to the system. So we try to make it as seamless as possible to gather the information. Remember, this data that is collected is utilized really to address the, the digital divide, if you will, throughout the state of New York. So this is our part in doing that. We have approximately 2,850 students here in the district, and we were able to collect 2,300-plus responses to date. So we're, we're far ahead of the curve in my, in my opinion. Those that have not yet filled out the survey will continue to get emails on a daily basis, short of the exclusions that we put in such as Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, and seven. So we'll continue to go through here to reach 100%. Again, we're hopeful that we can do that. We have until August 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, to report our final data. However, of course, we want to get that done before the end of June. So first poll was today, about 84% responses, district-wide. Very pleased with that. We'll continue sending that out. On that grounds, that's my report this evening. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
So we're hoping that we actually get the surveys like tomorrow or the next day so that we can send it out to our Choose Love Champions. You know, Dr. Coats and I will put a timeline on the amount of time that they have to return that to us. And then at that point, we turn it back over to Julia Richter and her team of coaches to compile and analyze the data based on the unique needs to then come back and present to us what, what that kickoff and implementation will look like building by building. And then we get into the scheduling pieces that I don't, I don't necessarily believe will be a difficult piece. However, as I had said, there, there has to be some great flexibility for us to make them all work. We kicked around some really good ideas today. We talked about, you know, getting some in-person assemblies even for the students. And then, you know, we have maybe a school full of our students in the auditorium while we have our educators for that building getting some in-person training as well, whereas others may have to do some previously recorded or archived materials. I don't, I don't think that we're going to have a problem with step one here, it's getting into that scheduling piece. But again, you know, we're quite pleased with this approach because it's not just asking everybody to take a three-hour PD for free and turn it over and saying, here it is, do it. And I think it's more important to, to go through and, and to provide some demo lessons and best practices discussions. And I do think we'll have better results. Plus, our goal is longevity with this program. You know, not just for one year, but rather develop the culture, K-12, that we'd be proud to stand behind for years to come. Sure.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Wanted to bring a note for acknowledgement of Dr. Coats's weekly update last week regarding school safety. If you want to further, any other comments regarding your safety? Sure. So families have reached out following the tragedy in Michigan that occurred this week. As they did share the weekly video update, our focus on school safety is three prongs. Number one, we have a strong relationship with our bill of the Goshen Police Department that has presence in every single building. They have presence throughout the day, arrival, dismissal. They have built relationships with faculty and the students in every single building in a very positive way. As recently as today, was forwarded by the Chief of Police and now from the District Attorney, David Buhler, who also has offered support to the schools in the area and Orange County, recommending that if there is any concern, to continue to partner with and rely on your local police to do an investigation if there is a concern for any type of safety-related issue, regarding violence, regarding weaponry, anything of the sort. So that relationship, I think, is imperative to us as a district moving forward. The other piece, as we just discussed, is really social, emotional, mental health that we have to stay committed to. We have and need to continue to stay committed to looking into the future. Our clinicians have certainly gone through a variety of different trainings. We need to make sure that they are continuously updated on signs and signals to work with. And we have to encourage our teaching staff to make referrals to our clinicians when things come up as well. There was in fact a clip in this week's respond to NISBA where a classroom teacher had not made a referral and actually the, the district had lost a suspension hearing based on the fact that a classroom teacher did not refer that student for assistance to the directions. And finally, the, the third part again is really our commitment to envelope the building-level safety, the physical perimeter and security of the building during the school day. All of our buildings use a single point of access throughout the school day. Once all of our faculty and staff are in, all visitors are required to come to the front door. All of our buildings now have a security hole, so someone actually has to be fuzzed into the building during the day. All those are monitored either by a greeter or by the village police or both. So that ongoing commitment and will be invigorated, if you will, in these conversations. And we will continue to watch for any updates or any changes that we need to make. And I want the community to be assured that we're doing a great amount to try to secure our buildings, try to secure our students and our staff, so that we do not have a tragedy like what happened in Michigan, Cleveland, and Arizona.
And then just a reminder, I think our dedication to safety, I think Goshen was one of the first schools to have a SRO to not city in each building. And it was important for us to have that SRO, be a village Goshen police officer as we have a very good relationship with them and our community does as well. And we're committed to keep that going forward. And this, this is another comment on the other topic I brought up through our board of ed email, which is COVID and quarantining and things like that. It's amazing to think that we're still talking about this in December 2021. I think many of us thought, you know, we were done with this, but we're not. And it's just a reminder to, to the parents and to kids who get frustrated by being quarantined. It is not our rule. It is not our decisions. And we need to follow, we must follow Department of Health guidelines. And we will continue to advocate, advocate, I would, thank you, for clarity. You know, I know there's some program down there, the return test, or test to return, of course. My own program. Test to return. And I know that's out there, been thought out there, it just has not been approved by the New York County Department of Health. And like Dr. Coats said earlier, you will keep us updated if the cat needs change and we can get that out to people. What is terrible is kids who we're all here for, obviously, all here in our time, is when, you know, they get quarantined and they're not sick, but they've been exposed and they miss out on events. And I can understand that frustration and it's unfair and all of those things. And I think we all agree on that. Kids get heard. It breaks our hearts here on Floridification, I know. And whether it be a musical or a concert or sporting event, you know, sometimes two weeks is part of the season or the only time they get to perform or whatever. And it's, it's really, you know, our, our heart picks up in this case. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any motion? Jim? Allison? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. Board of Education approved the consent agenda presented. Next on the agenda is old business. We have some policy updates, second reading and re-adoptions. Any motion? Billy? Tom? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. Board of Education approves the second reading and re-adoption of policies. Policy 6160, professional growth in staff development, and policy 7521, students with life-threatening health conditions. All in favor? Vote. Move on to new business. 11.1, any motion for approval mitts? Allison? Jeremy? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. Board of Education approves the man for November 15th, 2021, regular board meeting. All there?
Aye.
Vote. 11.2, motion to approve individual agreements for special education services, sub-allocation of IDEA 611 and 619 funds. Billy? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. Board of Education enters into individual agreements with the Center for Discovery, Upstate Cerebral Policy, Center for Spectrum Services, Green Chimneys, and Jay Wannio, Inc., to provide special education services for students in this district to sub-allocate IDEA 611 and 619 funds to said providers on a per-student basis for the school year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. All there? Vote. 11.3, any motion to approve sort of budgetary trends? Jeremy? Tom? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. The Board of Education approves the following budgetary transfers. Retroactive salary for employee paid incorrectly, 111721, $34,000. Student transfer to Bosie Special Education Program, 1117, 2021, $49,765. And Human Welfare Fund, under budgeted, 1117, 2021, $30,000. All in favor? Vote. 11.4, we have a couple, 11.4, 11.5, wrestling, we're going to do some tournaments and travel. Just reminder that when we travel on these, we are providing the bus. I think the parents or booster clubs are there to kind of take care of all of that or expenses. Am I correct, right? Also, you'll, you'll see any resolutions. There is a right to, by Board of Education, to cancel any tournament or any trip in our discretion, if you think it's unsafe. Any motion for 11.4, an overnight trip by the wrestling team to Cooperstown, New York? Shannon and Billy? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. The Board of Education approves the overnight trip for wrestling teams to attend the Cooperstown Wrestling Tournament in Cooperstown, New York from December 28th through December 30th, 2021. Be further resolved that the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside of the control of this school district in its sole discretion. All there? Vote. 11.5, wrestling team to Phoenix. Here you go. Jeremy? Allison? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. Board of Education approves the overnight trip for a wrestling team to attend the Phoenix Midwinter Wrestling Tournament in Phoenix, New York from January 14th to 16th, 2022. Be further resolved that the Board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of any emergency condition outside the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All there? Vote. 11.6, we're establishing a school extra classroom activity fund. Any motion? Shannon? Allison? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools that an account for the following club be established within the extra classroom activity fund at Ocean High School. Young Republican Club, Faculty Advisor, Repunter Mullein. Be further resolved that the faculty club advisor days authorize to sign his personal orders, receipts, and otherwise overseas account in accordance with district policy and the procedures outlined in the New York State Education Department guideline entitled the Safeguard, Accounting, and Auditing of Extra Classroom Activity Funds. All there? Vote. 12.1. Motion to approve increase in per-dam rate for certified and non-certified substitute teachers. Shannon? Billy? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the super ten schools. The Board of Education approves the increase in per-dam rate for certified teachers to $125. And increase the per-dam rate for non-certified teachers to $115. The fact that December 31st, 2021, you know, I am in a, all in favor? I don't want to be a example. All there? Vote. 11.8, looks like we have another pilot for solar energy. We are very popular for solar energy. Any motion? Billy? Chairman? Whereas, on November 30th, 2021, the Goshen Central School District, District, received a letter dated November 23rd, 2021, and Professional Commercial Group, LLC, known as a developer, notifying the district of the developer's intention to construct a solar energy system on real property located within the district in accordance with Real Property Tax Law 487. And whereas, the statute provides the developer with a 15-year tax exemption on any increase to the value of other real estate from which the solar and energy system is constructed. And whereas, the statute requires the district to notify the developer if the district intends to request that the developer enter into a payment and move taxes or pilot agreement within 60 days of receipt of the notification. And whereas, the Board of Education intends to request such a pilot. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education intends to request that the developer enter into a pilot agreement in accordance with Real Property Tax Law 487. And be further resolved that the superintendent schools and such other employees and agents of the district are directed to undertake and complete all acts as required to effect the purposes of this resolution, and be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. All there? 11.9, we're approving the board goals and objectives for dated December 6th. You know, and, and. Be resolved, the Board of Education adopts the board goals and objectives dated 2, dated 4 of 2021, 22 school year at the end. All there? Close. And 11.10, I need a motion to extend the interim athletic director and assistant principal at Goshen High School. Chairman? Tom? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, Board agrees to extend the employment of Louis Chiapi III to serve as interim assistant principal and athletic director at Goshen High School effective September 18th, 2001, through June 30th, 2022, at a salary of $750 per day. All there? Close. Need motion for executive session. Chairman? Allison? Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to continue the business force in the reading for discussions related to negotiations and the employment history of particular persons. All there? Close. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
See you in the morning.